I'd like to call the October 2025 Lancaster County Planning Commission Meeting Order. Thanks to everyone that's in attendance. All the commission members were present. Did everyone receive their September packets and time to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes or updates noted?
No.
Good. I'd like to make a motion to accept September's meeting minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Steve.
Fair enough. Did you get that, Crystal? All right. So, we've got four consideration items on our docket, no public hearings, then there are other business, and of course, the Board of Supervisors' appeals update. So, Ms. Hall, you want to start us out with the proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan regarding small scale solar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To this, uh, this, excuse me.
We're all having trouble.
Forgot my glasses. No. This memo to discuss proposed amendments to Chapter 6 of the Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan after our views deemed complete, hold a public hearing on the proposed changes at the November Planning Commission meeting. In response to concerns regarding the existing solar facility on a residential property, the Board of Supervisors discussed elements of the efficacy of the existing ordinance, inquiring if the actual configuration, location, and operation of these existing solar facilities are coalescing with the intent of the ordinance as it relates to small-scale residential solar facilities, specifically size, height, location, and noise. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors voted affirmatively to request the Planning Commission to reevaluate the existing ordinance as it pertains specifically to small-scale residential ground-mounted solar structures. At the May Planning Commission meeting, staff presented research regarding various elements of residential solar facilities along with recommended changes. After a discussion of each staff recommendation, the Planning Commission instructed staff to draft proposed revisions based on input and feedback from the discussion. A public hearing on these proposed revisions was held at the July 17, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, and based on feedback from the Board of Supervisors and the community, the Planning Commission requested additional changes to the original proposed amendments to include a requirement for a special exception for all applications for small-scale ground-mounted solar installations. County staff consulted with Jim Cornwell, county attorney, regarding this request, and he informed staff that in order to add a special exception for all small-scale ground-mounted solar, the comprehensive plan would need to be updated. Included in your packet for review is a copy of the proposed change to Chapter 6 of the comprehensive plan. And if you look at that next page, we're eliminating one sentence which says, "Projects on rooftops and located in yards will be treated in a manner similar to other structures such as carports and sheds." So by removing that language, it will enable us to potentially make the changes in the next consideration item that were proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Pretty straightforward. Do you want to have any questions for staff? Any comments?
You want comments on the overall change?
Have you want to do a date?
All right. The reason that's been presented so far for making this change is so that, uh, that, uh, the planning, or the Board of Supervisors, uh, will get some feedback as far as how neighbors feel about the change. Is that basically what you had in mind, Ty?
Yeah, well, what, I think the staff and the Board of Supervisors directed, you know, the roof-mounted solar, yeah, is fine, but they, anyone that wanted to do the ground-mounted would have to petition for a special exception to go in front of the board, and that way the jointed properties would be notified prior. It just wouldn't be by right.
Right.
If I'm correct.
Yep, correct.
Yeah, the way I see it, we had already decided to, uh, to address the issue of neighbors by increasing the setback requirement for the ground-mounted, um, installations from five feet to 25 feet, which I feel is a very substantial change and would make a big difference in, in, uh, neighbors' acceptance of these things. The problems I see with a special exception route are, number one, it's expensive and time-consuming for, for the applicant. Uh, I think it's, uh, 400 bucks just to file a, an application for a special exception. Uh, as time goes on, uh, the special exception, uh, applications will require, in my opinion, an ever-increasing portion of supervisors' meeting time. With the predicted increases in electric cars and the data-centered demands of artificial intelligence, the cost of electricity, which is already, uh, going up substantially, uh, will go up substantially in the coming years. And that, along with the decreasing costs of solar panels, will result in substantial increases in the number of those deciding to make their own electricity. And whereas now, most of those people are upper echelon income people, I think that's going to change, and it'll be people of much more moderate means that are trying to control the soaring cost of electricity. But the third, and to me, the most critical reason for not requiring a special exception is that it will just downright deter a lot of people from, from making their own electricity. Those that do the ground-mounted installations are doing so not because they prefer that route, but they're, by and large, their roofs just don't face the right direction. Uh, so they have no choice. But, uh, a lot of people, and I'm sure most of you realize this, to a lot of people, getting up in front of their friends and neighbors and publicly asking, uh, officials for something is just something they're not willing to do. They're, they don't like to speak in public. And as I say, a lot more of these people are going to be lower-income people, moderate-income people, and that's especially true, I think, in that group. So, a lot of people just aren't gonna, gonna go that route because of that. I believe, and the state of Virginia believes, that every property owner has the right to make their own electricity. And nobody, nobody should be denied that right just because their roof doesn't face the right direction.
Thank you, Dave. Quick question. How many scrailed-mounted solar panel operations have been requested versus roof-mounted? Do you have any idea?
I'm aware of only two.
I think we've got three.
Three, okay.
Do we have any idea roof-mounted in the county, roughly?
Uh, I can get that information. I'm not sure.
I mean, it's just, just for what, from what I see in my day-to-day business, it's, I don't know if I've ever seen ground-mounted. But to your point, Dave, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I don't think the county's saying that you can't have ground-mounted. I'm just thinking that they want a special exception. And I understand about people not wanting to come and talk, but they're certainly not saying you can't have it. Um, I mean, that's kind of the way I look at it.
I think with this 25-foot setback, uh, you know, we're, neighbors are far more protected in this case than they are many others. I mean, their next-door neighbor can build a shed where they have all kinds of noisy, uh, equipment five feet from their property line. There are all kinds of things they can do five feet from their property line, and we have no controls over that. We can't control everything. And this is one thing that I think we should not control.
Anybody else have anything they want to add? All right. Well, then, I think this is a consideration item, but, um, moving forward, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, to, for this proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan regarding small-scale solar to be pushed forward with favorable approval for a public hearing at next month's Planning Commission. Did you get that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Here.
Okay. Thank you all. Item number two, kind of goes hand in hand, but if you want to update us with that, please, Ms. Hall?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration. Uh, we have proposed amendments to Part 1 of the zoning ordinance, Article 1 definitions, to amend the definition of small-scale solar installation, and to amend Article 28-3, Small-Scale Residential Solar of the Lancaster County Code, uh, the Virginia Land Development Code. Um, at your, a previous meeting, you held a public hearing on this. We will need to hold another public hearing, should it be your desire to afford it, um, to the next meeting for that purpose, uh, because we are adding, um, the special exception requirement, and that would be the only change to the language since the last public hearing on this, um, topic. Included in your packet for review was a comparison of the current and proposed changes to the ordinance and the red-line changes to the applicable definition, and the accompanying changes for the potential revision to Article 28. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And I'd also like to say that this was tabled because we wanted to make sure that it was appropriate by our county attorney with the language.
That is correct.
To move forward. So, I mean, in coattailing with what we just voted on, um, I would just like to make another motion to forward this to next month's, uh, Planning Commission meeting for its, maybe its third public hearing? Or the second?
Second public.
Only the second one. Uh, with the proposed changes as presented in this document. All in favor affording it for next month's meeting public hearing? Uh, opposed?
Here.
Okay. Did you get that, Crystal? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Okay, moving right along. Item three, we've got a proposed amendment to Part 1 zoning ordinance, Article 8, definitions of the Lancaster County Virginia Land Development Code, uh, to amend the definitions of private heliport and to amend Article 5, Residential General District R1 of the Lancaster County Virginia Land Development Code. Heliport, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Community members raised concerns regarding the commercial operation and landing of helicopters on residential property at the August Board of Supervisor meeting. Based on these concerns, the Board of Supervisors voted affirmatively to request the Planning Commission to reevaluate the existing ordinance as it pertains specifically to the permissibility of helicopter landings. Included in your packet for review are proposed changes to amend Part 1 of the zoning ordinance, Article 1 definitions, to amend the definition of private heliport, and proposed changes to amend Article 5, Residential General District R1 of the Lancaster County Virginia Land Development Code, to remove F, excuse me, 5-1-31, private heliports with a special exception as a permissible use in R1. If removed from Article 5 as a permissible use, private heliports would only be permissible in A2 zoning with a special exception. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, what's, what's brought this up? What's the background?
Absolutely.
Good question.
That is a good question. Um, we had a private commercial helicopter company who, um, wanted to land, uh, on a private property off of my farm road. Um, and originally, the owner applied for a special exception, and they withdrew that special exception after, um, the helicopter pilot, uh, advised them that he felt they didn't need that special exception, um, upon his interpretation of our code. Um, after that, he did a few test landings, and it upset the neighbors, um, in that area, and they complained repeatedly and, uh, presented, um, a presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, we had a lot of people come out, uh, in support of their presentation who did not want, uh, helicopter landings, um, in R1 on private property. He essentially, it was pretty much going to be like an Uber for helicopter flights, uh, to DC from this area. Um, and they made a few key points, specifically that, uh, the airfield is so close, um, so they could just pick people up there. Um, and they had a few other, um, points that they made in their presentation. If you'd like to view that, you can see it at the Board of Supervisor meeting online on the iCompass system. Um, and I'd be happy to send you, um, a copy of that as well. And so that's what brought this about.
So this is not a landowner who wanted to land his own helicopter there?
It is not. Um, the owner, uh, is not a helicopter pilot, and so this is a commercial helicopter business that wanted to use her residential property for that purpose.
Yeah, and I think further, it's not even the owner that's, that wants it. It's the person that's renting the house currently.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so, it's, it's pretty interesting. I don't know how we miss heliports all the time. I guess we just looked over. It's like, who the hell's gonna have a helicopter? As we were going through the zone and everything. I never thought about it. Um, but it looks like it's, unless I'm missing something, it's fairly straightforward. We've got two strikes, um, that are clearly noted in the, in the ordinance, removing them. So what would the next step be? I know we forward it to, to a public hearing, but...
That's correct. You would forward it, uh, to a public hearing if it's your desire at the next meeting. Uh, that public hearing would be held, and then you would forward to the Board of Supervisors with your recommendation, which could be approval or denial. Um, and so it is those two changes you mentioned. We're simply changing the word, uh, operated by the property owner to piloted by the property owner. Um, I was informed, uh, from people who were here during the time when this was originally added to the code, um, and I think it was Dr. Nichols, um, that the, the intent was for that to mean that the owner was piloting it. The way it's worded is, is slightly ambiguous, um, which is why we're proposing that change. And then...
Yeah, I think his son, who's also a helicopter pilot, is still doing it.
I think he flies planes mostly.
Oh, he does?
Yeah, but Dr. Nichols would land right at his house to get over to the town and back and forth.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, this is fairly straightforward. That's a commercial use in a residential district. That shouldn't be allowed by right, 100%. I mean, what do you guys think?
Totally agree.
Okay. Well, do you want, I'm making all the, would you like to make a motion, please?
I move that we, um, forward the proposed amendment, Part 1 zoning ordinance, Article 1 definition, to amend definition of private heliport, to amend Article 5 Residential General District R1 of the Lancaster County Virginia Land Development Code to the November, um, meeting for a public hearing.
We've got a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, guys. Um, number four on our consideration docket, proposed amendment to Part 4 Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance and Lancaster County Land Development Code to comply with legislative updates to the applicable Virginia code. And this was a, quite a big code, but anyway, thank you for making it easy to read, Ms. Hall.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, DEQ has let us know that we are required to make changes to our, uh, Part 1 Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. Um, those changes are detailed for you. Uh, in the model ordinance, the changes that we absolutely have to include are double underlined. Um, and then I've incorporated those changes into our existing code for your, uh, viewing. Some of those changes were included specifically regarding trees and landscaping, even though they weren't double underlined, because without the rest of that text, it simply wouldn't make sense. So we had to include more than what was double underlined. Um, really, the meat of it is the resiliency, um, assessment is what they want added. And so we are required by law to make these changes, and our DEQ liaison for our Bay Act program will be reviewing this to make sure that we have updated it appropriately. Um, so I was thinking, we probably wouldn't send this to public hearing until we have her blessing. So I'm going to send this to her, um, and then we'll hear back from her and work on it then. Um, so, Don, do you think we should do a vote to send it to public hearing with, with any changes DEQ needs, or how, how should we proceed with it?
Uh, I think let's, uh, let's get liaison's, uh, comments.
Okay.
Let the Planning Commission know.
As a finished product, is kind of what I would think.
Okay.
And just to further, this is typical end-of-year general assembly. They're asking us to update, but they're basically telling us to update.
You are correct.
All right. Um, and on a separate note, I want to thank staff for making all of these changes, at least to me. It was easy to read and note, and it's, that's not easy. It's a lot of work that went into that. It's not underappreciated, I'd tell you. So, but thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Will they look, we have a look at it before next month's meeting, you think, or do you don't know?
I hope so. I think they will.
Well, this isn't anything that's pressing as far as we're concerned. Um, okay, but we'll just table this item until next month's meeting, if that's okay with you guys. Do y'all have any questions on that for Ms. Hall?
No. Actually, I do have one question. Sure, let me get to my page. Um, it's on page 67 of 106, and there are two little, um, illustrations, and I cannot read anything on there, even with my glasses. So I don't know if maybe we could get something clearer.
Yes, I will work on that. Um, that is in the existing code, but I think I can blow that up in a way that you can actually read it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Good observation. I just didn't have my glasses on, so we couldn't see it anyway.
That makes two of us.
You're doing a great job without your glasses.
Thank you.
Other business, how are we with the GIS mapping? The land use map with Chapter 7 of the Comprehensive Plan. Does that go hand-in-hand with GIS, or is that totally separate?
It does. We are working on some changes, and Glenn is going to help us get, um, some GIS software that we need to work on that. So it may be a little while before we get those maps to you all.
Curiously.
It is one of the more interesting things that we've worked on, so we will be in touch with that soon.
So that's the same with the update of the land use mapping?
Yes.
Which is kind of some work in progress?
Correct.
Do we have any board's own appeals updates?
Now, they're coming in. We've got a couple set for next month. We didn't have anything this month. I'm not 100% sure what's coming in next month.
So, they're going to be appealing, uh, my decision in regards to the heliports. Um, so I...
Work his way back up.
Right. So I sent, I would, um, sent a notice of violation, and so that's being appealed.
What, what happens if they, whatever happens if the Board of Supervisors appeals, and we've already gone through the process of removing them from our, is that, are they, would they have a grandfather?
No. So this language is just kind of tightening up the language that we already have, and then, of course, removing the R1. Um, so, should they be successful in an, in an appeal? I'm not sure. Jim would have to advise us on, on how that would proceed, but he wanted us to work on these changes prior to that meeting.
Okay. All right. It's interesting. They're trying all angles, which I guess is fair.
This, this strengthens air position.
Okay. Since we're just sitting here talking, what is the appeal for?
The, the appeal is to appeal the administrator's decision of the violation.
If it's in here now and legal, I, I guess I'm getting a little confused here. It's not going to be illegal till it's tightened up.
No, you...
I shouldn't say illegal.
No, you, you're going to evaluate whether or not the decision that Mrs. Hall made in regards to the violation letter was appropriate or not.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it wasn't even a special exception. Yeah, it was always a special exception.
Well, they were, they withdrew that special exception. Oh.
But I mean, to be allowed, it had to be by a special exception anyway.
Correct.
They withdrew.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that would be your...
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah.
I was following what Steve was saying.
Yeah.
I understand. Y'all are 20 yards ahead of us. We're just catching up.
And that doesn't affect any emergency landings of like EMS helicopters or anything like that?
Oh, no.
It would not affect that.
No, I mean, this is simply...
Yeah.
Anything else to expect next month?
Um, no.
Meeting date?
Oh, yes. We, thank you. We need to discuss our meeting date for November. Um, to have a quorum, we need four people physically present. So the options are November 6 or November 13.
November 13, November 13 would be the regular meeting date. It's a second Thursday in the month, but the Board of Supervisors' meeting is moved up a week to the third Thursday because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So your normal meeting date would have been the second November 13, but Olivia told me that she's wondering if we're going to be able to get a quorum on the 13th. So we're looking at alternate dates if we're not going to have a quorum.
I know one's going to be seeing their grandbaby that day, either day, both days. Her first grandbaby, so she's got a good excuse. But I, I would push for the 13th just because it gives staff more time to get prepared for the meeting instead of crunching it together, maybe get the DEQ to look at. But I'm open, but see?
I can't be out there to, to set the plan.
Okay, Dave.
What is, what's the 13th?
That would be the...
Thursday night.
Thursday.
Yes, Thursday.
It'd be the second Thursday as opposed to the third Thursday, because at Thanksgiving, the Board of Supervisors is taking our third...
because at Thanksgiving, the Board of Supervisors is taking our third Thursday spot. So then we either get the first or the second week.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
Dr. Anderson?
I'll be here.
13?
The 13th or the 6th.
That's three. We know we're going to be... Four, that's four. All right, we got five. So let's do the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Do you guys have anything else for staff?
Doing a great job. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
That's good. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you.